We received an invitation from Craven County. They're celebrating their 300th anniversary. They're going to have an event on September 22nd from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Convention Center there at the Riverfront. We'll have a more formal invitation in your weekly packet you'll get in the mail this week, but if you would, please note that. Other than that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. And I don't -- is Dr. Emory here?
Actually, Commissioner Hammond passed me this note here to announce Unity March to Stop Black on Black Violence and Homicides for Saturday, October 6th at 12:00 noon. Location will be the West Greenville Gym. Looks like it's being put on by the Benevolence Corps here in Greenville City.
Okay. We'll just pass that and I mean, I know she's not -- we got her down for 9:45, so we might call her or text her or email her if you want to, but we'll move on to Kiara Jones. There she is, on the ready. Thank you.
Good morning. When I became the Director of Public Information Office in 2008, I wasn't aware of any awards that the office had won, so I made it a personal goal of mine for us to win at least five. If you remember, in 2011, I came before you to let you know that we won two Excellence in Communications Award from the NC3C North Carolina City and County Communicators Conference. And earlier this year, I'll let you know, we won two more. And I'm here. That time, Commissioner Ward, you told me to bring back some national awards.
Yes.
So I'm here to say that we have done that. We won an award of excellence from the City and County Communications and Marketing Association, and that is a national organization, the first time that we submitted, and we actually won an award, so I just wanted to let you guys know that. It was for a program that we produced, a media documentary on, I call it A Walk in My Shoes, and it highlighted a Pitt County school's teacher and a former deputy county sheriff who suffered with MS and actually helped promote the MS Walk. So I wanted to publicly thank my public information specialist, Michael Emery, for doing such an excellent job on it and to let you guys know about the award. So, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Okay, we can go to international next. Kathy Booker, our tax collection report, please, if you'll come forward.
Thank you. The Pitt County year-to-date, which is July and August 2012, we're just into it two months in the new year, the combined collection rate for real and personal property and registered motor vehicles is 60.96, which is a -- which is an increase of 4.78 over last year's year-to-date combined collection rate of 56.18.
That's it. Any questions?
Motion to accept the report.
We have a motion to accept. Now, Mr. James?
Yeah. We give a discount for those people who paid our taxes early.
Yes, that discount runs in July and August.
July and August, so now it's too late for them to get it now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I want that to bring that out. We probably ought to advertise that more.
It's 2%.
We actually listed on the bill itself?
We do.
Yeah, but you get them, you don't double.
There's important information on there for the public, especially on the back. It's packed full of important information for the public.
And I knew that, but a lot of people just get them and they don't look at it.
Yeah, we would like for them to read the important.
I think it's interesting to note that when she appeared last month, we'd collected about $5 million of the total amount of taxes. Now it's up to almost $41 million, so the good number of people do take advantage of that 2% discount and get it in before the 31st.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the report. Can we vote, please? There are no more comments?
Thank you.
And we'll go back up to Dr. Emory. And you're not late. We were just moving a little ahead, which is unusual.
Thank you. Congratulations for moving a little ahead. That's nice. Good morning. I hope you're all doing well, and thank you for letting me run back and forth between meetings this morning. I appreciate it. Welcome back to school. We start Week 3 today, and we're really sort of pinching ourselves. You hate to say too much about how smooth and easy it's been because invariably something will happen, but we didn't have any reassignment, we didn't change any bus routes, so it's amazing what happens when you have consistency over years, how smooth a start to the school year we've had. And we owe a great debt of gratitude to our folks on the ground, bus drivers, folks at schools, teachers, everybody who helps prepare and make for a good opening to school. We are running into Day 10 this week, and that's a big day for us. Day 10 and 20 are big days for us because we look at whether we need to shift staff from school to school. Some schools, we know already, have more kids show up than we planned for, and others have less, and so we don't have the luxury of just saying, okay, you hire a teacher. We sometimes have to make some moves, and so we're looking at those numbers and looking at what kind of moves we might have to make. We also are excited about the fact that we had two schools this year that did an early start. You all have seen, and we talked about Race to the Top dollars, and some of our schools chose to use some of their Race to the Top dollars for extended learning time to bring their kindergarten class in early. And Northwest and Belvoir brought children in early, and they had a three-week head start to the school year, and that allows us to measure the readiness of those students for kindergarten. And we know that it doesn't take a lot of time to help those kids get a little bit of a head start on kindergarten readiness. We had any school in Pitt County last year that scored below 60% on their composite receive Race to the Top money for extended learning time, and we got really good results from that, whether that was extending their school day, or having Saturday school, or these summer programs. We know, and really that follows what research says, kids who are behind, if they have more time, we can accelerate their learning. We're very excited about results from last year. You all have probably seen all that in the paper, but I do want to reiterate, we saw another more than 3% jump in our graduation rate. So in a three-year period, we've gone from a 58% rate, which was unacceptable, to 73. And while we still have a ways to go, we have a goal of 80. We're excited about the progress our schools have made. And I also can't say enough, we're extremely proud of Aiden Grifton High School and South Central High School, who already are above that 80% rate this year. So we congratulate them for the hard work and effort that they have made. We also had another above-average this year that we have not had, and that is that when we combined all of our schools that made growth or high growth, we had more than 90% of our schools meet that goal, and that was above the average in the state of North Carolina, which was 80%. And so we are thrilled to be making that progress, marching along. The assessments that we have used for years, ABC Tools, which measures growth and high growth, will completely change this year. So our teachers and staff and students enter a school year not knowing what the assessments will look like in the spring, or how we'll be rated or sorted on them. So there's a little bit of anxiety, as you might imagine, moving away from the familiarity of something they have had for 13 years into a complete unknown. So we're trying to help our teachers know that if they teach the new Common Core and Essential Standards, and those assessments are aligned to them, then our students should do well. We also wanted to share with you that this is the last year of our three high schools who had the school improvement grants from the federal government, and we have moved away from positions as people have left those positions. Those dollars have been moved into technology. In fact, our board approved this summer a half a million dollar purchase of technology for those three high schools for the upcoming school year. And so in this last year of that grant, the idea is sustainability and being sure that we're putting tools in the hands of students that help them and help their learning be accelerated. One of the key positions from the grant that we will be challenged as a district to look to how we continue are the graduation coaches. And in those three high schools, those people have done a phenomenal job of getting out in communities and visiting families, literally going and getting kids and getting them back to school, tracking their progress, tracking their transcripts. It's surprising to see how many students get to be juniors and seniors and don't realize that if they make a few changes in their schedule, they might graduate on time. One of the programs we have going at Rose High, which was not a grant school, is called ACES, and they actually use some of their remediation money to hire folks to come in there, and they find, they actually find a fairly decent volume of seniors who, if they manage their schedules right and pick up a few extra courses online, will graduate on time. And that's just from doing a very thorough look at their transcripts and working with the counseling department. The other exciting program we're launching this year is at South Greenville Elementary School. South Greenville becomes our first school to be an iPad school, and we were able to find some support funds to make sure that every third through fifth grader will have individualized learning using that device. And we know the device is not everything, it's just another way to help them learn, but we are quite surprised by even the little ones who know how to manage those devices better than the adults do. So our South Greenville staff spent a lot of time this summer training. They're very excited, and the students, we're doing a special program at the end of the month where the students will each get their iPad and very ceremoniously so that they realize that we believe in them and we know that they can accelerate their achievement as well. Things are changing so quickly that we really do try to pilot these things in small places first to see what the bumps are and what the things are that are positive about impacting learning. So the other task we have ahead of us this year is looking at our schedule. The legislature last year mandated either five additional school days or additional hours. So we will be looking at, as a district, can we lengthen the day that we currently have and not add those five days, or do we add two? And so we will be working on what will that look like for us, and we're hoping to not add the full five days if we can avoid that because of the cost of transportation, which as of yet, we don't know that we will have any funding for. So again, I just want to say thank you to you all for your support of our school system. We know that we fare better. I hope you saw the article over the weekend about funding. We know that we have fared better than most during these difficult years because of your support. We appreciate the partnership and the collaboration in tight times and helping us be creative about how we manage that. We feel good about sort of the uptake here. Our teachers and state employees got a 1.2% salary increase, and I've had people in the community say, oh, they got a big raise. And I've said, well, most of our teachers already spent that 1.2% getting their classrooms ready for school to start back. It's not like that's a car payment or a house payment, but I think it is a good gesture and a sign that things are getting better. We also had more turnover this year. We hired 125 teachers, and those aren't new positions, of course, but that's the most hiring we've done in the last three summers. So we think that also means people are moving around a little bit and feeling a little more confident economically. So again, we thank you for your support, and whatever questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hammond and then Mr. James.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dr. Emory, could you give me an update on the unitary status of the school, please, ma'am?
Yes, sir. We are awaiting to hear from Judge Howard a date. You know, we were supposed to, we are supposed to return to court in December, and because of the Lake Forest issue and the appeal of the Fourth Circuit, which came back to Judge Howard, we asked him to put all of those issues together, the issue of Lake Forest reassignment and the unitary status case, and we told him we would be prepared by October 1st. So we are, at this point, awaiting his date for us to return to court, and we hope we'll hear all of those things together.
Okay. Is that it?
Do you have an application for a charter school this year?
No, sir. The district, did the district file an application?
Pardon?
Are you asking, did the school district file an application for a charter school?
Did you?
I'm asking you, did you receive an application?
We, we got copies of applications from entities in the community who filed, because you know, the law says they have to file a copy with us. Neither of those two entities got past the first round of the application process.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, is that finished? Mr. James?
I got a phone call from a parent in Belvoir saying that they are turing, they were taking up money to buy books, and I saw that you were on television referring to that. But it kind of disturbed me, so I said, well, and I pick up students every day going at home. I asked her, I said, do you have a book? And she showed me a book, social service, that she had got that day. That was Thursday, I believe, the last week. And I wanted to know why you didn't have it before, when teachers are there and personalities there before. But then I went on and checked with them, and I find that there are hundreds of students that don't have books. As a matter of fact, there are thousands who don't have books. And I was a classroom teacher for 35 years. It disturbed me very much, because I know if you don't have books, that for your student, your teacher, well, the teacher's got books. I'll say that back, but the students don't. Somebody has got to do some extra work and a lot of extra work. I do know that, of course, I think in 24 years, this will all be computerized. I know that. But we're living today. These students are here today, and the teachers are here today, and it looks like to me that they, they need help, and they need it now. This particular parent wanted to know, doesn't the school have any money to buy books? I said, yeah, I'm sure they got money. I said, because books is one of the key things. If you don't have books to drive, to teach these people, I don't see how a teacher can do it. So then I went on to question teachers, and they said that a lot of times, they have to run that material off to take it to be able to teach. And that is mighty hard to take and to do in this day and time. Do you have somebody in the county school system that's in charge of the books? All right, so therefore, and I have some questions now here. Textbooks, what percentage of students do you think in Pitt County schools don't have books today? The teachers don't have books for those students to take and use?
There's no way I can answer that question, Mr. James. What I can tell you, and it's the only answer, and it's not one you're going to want to hear, is that for three years straight, the state of North Carolina has given us zero dollars for textbooks. The local money we have spent is to rebind, you know, we've got textbooks eight, 10, 12 years old, and they get used year in and year out. We've spent our local money just to rebind them or put covers on them to keep them together so we can keep using them. But a lot of children do not have books, particularly that they can take home, because we need to keep them for classroom sets.
Don't you believe that books are one of the most important things that you can have to educate these people that we have in schools today?
Sir, with all due respect, the money for textbooks comes from the state of North Carolina.
But if, if they aren't going to give it, now, I'm a tightwad. You know that.
Okay, but a biology book costs $197. We're not talking about something that's 20 bucks that we can just pay out of local or school-based funds, Mr. James. These are expensive.
Isn't it a state law that the state of North Carolina is supposed to furnish the students of North Carolina books for their education? Am I wrong? It used to be that.
Well, I think the General Assembly is who made the decision not to fund the textbooks.
Well, I think that...
Yes, you're, I don't know whether it's a law, but books are the fiduciary responsibility of the state.
That's right. Just like paying teachers. County bills the buildings. But I, I really think that we, that this board and your board, we need to work together to do every, what needs to be done. Because to me, as a classroom teacher, if I went in there and I didn't have a book or anything, that, you're taking the most important tool that I've got to take and teach. I mean, really.
Well, I think...
Maybe I'm crazy, I don't know, but...
No, I think it's another way, too.
Belvoir, you are, you are precious, but didn't you want books for your students?
I want a book now. I like to read the newspaper, but, but I do, I think if I'm not mistaken, a long time, not a long time ago, in fact, a little bit ago, the state of North Carolina had a textbook commission.
Yeah, they did.
That hired lots of people that distributed textbooks. We got new textbooks every four years, then it got to every five, then it got to every six, and then it got to where you got no new textbooks from the state of North Carolina, and that's gone on for at least three years. This is the third year.
For my benefit, if nobody else's, I want this, our manager or whoever it needs to be, to get in touch with the powers to be in Raleigh, see who's responsible to get these books, to help these students and these teachers out. I really do, and ever, and if they won't do it, then it's up to the duty of this board to take it and do something to make sure it's carried out. I really think we'll, somebody set down on a job that it needs to be done. And that's all I got. And I'm not putting, I'm not putting the blame on anybody, but I'm saying this, as a classroom teacher, you put me out there with that 30 head of young'uns, and I don't even have a book for them, you put, you put me behind the eight ball. I mean, really now, you get out there and you get that way and see what I'm talking about. And it's something that, I didn't realize, I really did not, Dr., I didn't realize that we didn't, that these teachers were going in these classrooms and did not have a book for those students. And it really, I said, man, somebody needs to take and get somebody riled up, and I'm a good one to start fussing about it.
Thank you. You're on the right track.
Thank you, Mr. James.
All right, we need to do something, we really do.
Okay.
I need to help them out.
I have Mr. McGlaughlin next.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm proud to note that our graduation rate has increased. Now, the dropout rate, I know that we've done better in that area also, but comparative to the state average, how are we?
We, this last year, and again, you know, the, the state is a year behind in reporting, so we won't get the official numbers for the 11, 12 school year until January or February of '13. By our own calculations, and again, we can't see what the rest of the state does. Last year, we were only two points behind the state average, and our feeling is, as nice a chunks as we were making, that this would be our year, 11, 12 would be our year to hit that average or, or get ourselves out from under that. But we won't, we won't know that. We can look at our own numbers, but we don't know what the rest of the state does until January of this year. So, you know, our goal was 50% in five years. We have two years left, and we believe we're well on our way to meet that goal.
And one of the biggest concern of mine, as you well know, I think you all, you have been somewhat proactive in this area, is bullying. And bullying is, as I said, is a very, it's a national concern, and it's, it's seemingly it's getting worse and worse as the years pass. What are we doing to be proactive in that area of bullying?
Well, our Board of Education has, has changed their policy in the last two years, so there's, you know, pretty much zero tolerance. There's a, there's a very strong position about that. We do training constantly with staff, with counselors. I would tell you, our biggest issue with bullying and trying to have the kind of impact we need is knowing about it. And part of the challenge we face right now is the majority of bullying starts, believe it or not, in cyberspace. Texting, email, online is where a lot of this stuff begins, and so the good news about that is if people report it, there's a way to trace it and find it and sometimes catch the perpetrators of the crime, so to speak. But a lot of times, kids don't tell us, or they don't tell their parents or anybody at school about something until it's weeks old, and then it's really hard to go back and, and recapture or find witnesses to that. So we encourage, we send letters at the beginning of the school year. We really have encouraged parents to please, as soon as your kid says something to you, please come to school and let us start to deal with the issues quickly, and encourage students to let us know. We still live in a world where we're concerned about bullying, but with, with kids, a lot of times, they just don't want to tell somebody. And sometimes that's genuinely out of a fear, you know, if I tell on this person, it's going to get worse, and sometimes it's, it's just, it's not cool, you know, to tell somebody else. So a lot of, a lot of effort goes on in our schools, everything from, you know, at some points, there's actually class changes that occur to separate kids. We've moved kids from schools, if parents want to do that, in order to alleviate an ongoing problem. But just last week, our, our attorney, Mr. Sonnenberg, got a call from a parent who was concerned because their child was getting texts from somebody. What, what, what can the school do? And you know, sometimes we really have to say to parents, you have the ability to control your child's cellphone. We, we can't, you know, we can't always manage that. So what we find is while a lot of this does manifest itself at school, it comes out in maybe a not-so-nice way at school, nine times out of 10, these things are beginning with kids texting each other, or Facebook, or some kind of social media.
Before I, piggybacking on the bullying thing, is there anything in the handbook, the disciplinary handbook, I know that's sent home every, about the process that, say, an administrator is supposed to follow if a report comes to them for bullying? I know that, that was like almost a handbook, which I really appreciated, because if something happened on your campus or with your students, you had a guideline of steps you had to follow. It's almost like if you suspect any kind of abuse, you have to report it, you have to get something moving. And I didn't know whether we had added any of that to the parent-student-teacher disciplinary handbook. If not, I think it would be a good thing to do. What steps should you follow if a report comes to you from a parent or a child?
The Code of Conduct for administrators and what a parent should expect to happen is there. The policy and procedure are more detailed than what's in the Code of Conduct, and those are online, so that's also another resource for parents.
But just as a, as an administrator, not so much as a parent, but if that call comes into an administrator, or to a teacher, or to, you know, the step, what do I do? You know, what do I do first, second, third, that kind of thing? I think it would be, because there are a lot of things in there like that, like bringing firearms and, you know, it's very specific as to what you have to do if you do that on campus, so.
They also have training annually.
Yeah.
So we try to reinforce it there, too.
Right.
Because it's become such a big issue.
But I agree with Commissioner McGlaughlin. I think it's one of those things that, you know, whatever we can do to help be proactive would be good.
Well, I think in the words of Jimmy Garrus, my, my first time I ever met Mr. Garrus, I asked him what I could do in this school district to be nice, I mean, to, to promote a better relationship. I'm jumping ahead of myself, and I was expecting a long, and he just looked at me and said, be nice. And I've never forgotten that, and I, I think that that's part of what we've lost in our, I mean, it's, it's a societal issue, it's a school issue.
Yes.
Just the whole issue of being nice and respecting each other is, is a difficult, is difficult for all of us.
And we can't take all, care of all of it in the school system, I understand that.
Well, we try, but...
I know, thank you. Okay, Mr. Smith?
How many textbook manufacturers are left that makes textbooks now, do you know?
That's, that's a good question, too. You know, a whole lot of them, I think, because states around the country have done a lot of what North Carolina's doing, have seen the writing on the wall. We have, all of our textbooks, we have on CD, so we can give a family a computerized version. The issue is access, and not every child has the ability to go home and put that, you know, into a computer. So the textbook companies have been, when you buy that book, you also buy the online version, and we don't have limits, Mr. Smith, about our ability to reproduce that. It's just, we have to be very... just, we have to be very careful that children have access to that.
I've heard there wasn't but one left that printed textbooks, I don't know, all of them, see, as you said, see the handwriting on the wall, it's going to a computer. How many classes do we have in Pitt County, if any, that the accreditation of that class is injected because they use a too-old textbook?
Well, you ask a very, very good question. We, we, this year are piloting the use of a device in AP Biology. It was our first course to come up, and the College Board would not grant credit because you can't teach from a book that's more than eight years old, and our AP Biology books are ten years old, and that book costs $200, and so, we can buy a device for a little over $300. The teachers met, they all said, hey, we can download free books, college textbooks, and use multiple sources if the kids have the, the tool. So, that's the route we went. It's a very small scale, and, you know, not something we can do with thousands of kids yet, but you're exactly right, I mean, you do get to points of the credit becomes an issue for the course if the resources are too old.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
The pre-K testing, explain that process, 'cause I don't quite understand it, and the federal judge ruling without having an effect on Pitt County.
Uh, good questions. If, if I, I would tell you that pre-K assessment is similar to low-well, it's, it's a very complicated formula. There's a, there's a academic or cognitive assessment to see where children are, there's also intake, where they look at the poverty level of a parent, and then there's also an interview that looks at the level of support that a pre-K child gets at home, if that makes sense. Because we know primary teachers for pre-K kids are not necessarily preschools, they're what exposures those children have at home, and there is a formula. And we have to rank-order children and serve the neediest children by that formula first. And North Carolina gives us a certain number of slots, they give us money for a certain number of slots, and we rank-order the children, and then we fill them. And, and by law, we have to fill the most at-risk, uh, serve the most at-risk students first. The question you raise about the courts is, what is the, what is the definition of at-risk? And I think before this gets resolved in the courts, and somebody's saying, the state's gotta come up with a lot of money, they're gonna have to resolve that, that formula. In Pitt County, it's not difficult for us, because we typically have about a thousand children on a waiting list for pre-K. So, I believe with all my heart, the six hundred and some we serve are the neediest, and that we could probably serve another six hundred, and they, they qualify as needy based on the subsidized services they get in the community. The difficulty is that we don't provide transportation, we don't have funds for transportation, so sometimes kids get accepted into a pre-K program, and then they can't get to the location to be served, and so, we'll go to the next child on the list. Did I answer your question?
I think I do. We've asked you a lot of questions, but I think the main concern of this board should be that we get in cut, touch with the legislators, and let them know what a predicament the school system, not just in Pitt County, but all over the state is gonna be in, with no textbooks, if they go onto computers, they're gonna have to come up with some money, or, some other source.
Well, and, you know, with, with your colleague sitting beside you, what I also hope doesn't happen is that because of court orders, we don't look at the big picture. And I'm a pre-K proponent, I believe it makes a huge difference for kids, but if we're gonna come up with a big chunk of money and we still can't fund textbooks, you know, we need to look at the K-12 mandated program first, and then we look at how do we serve our pre-K kids.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. James, I'm gonna be as gentle as I possibly can.
That's the reason I want to come back.
The, uh, every year, every year, we have a day when commissioners from all over the state go to the General Assembly and lobby, and since the textbook issue was brought up by you, and the, the funding with textbooks is by the General Assembly, it would be helpful if you'd go with us to lobby the members of the General Assembly. I, I don't miss one of these, and several other members of this board don't miss lobbying the General Assembly, and we, we need all the help we can get. And then, I, I do think that Dr. Emery should also mention that we, we had a, a high bid on the sale of Third Street School, and, and what, how that has developed.
We hope to be closing this week. Our board has to take action next Monday night to finalize that, and I'm not off the top of my head gonna call the exact amount, it was way more than we dreamed, the reverse bid process took a long time, but, what, about two-hundred-and-eighty-something, I think, and so, that's a good, that's, that's good for us. We are leasing back from the property owners, the warehouse that we have on that property for a year, because that's where we house textbooks, and we don't know what's gonna happen with that, and, and, you know, whether we can house them someplace else on one of our properties, and, so that gives us a little time to make a decision about what we do with that. But that was a, that was a plus, and, you know, they're already, they already have a, a variety of programs and training programs that they plan to implement there, so I think it's also going to be a viable and active part of the community, which was one of our concerns, was making sure whoever purchased it didn't just leave it sitting there doing nothing, so.
Thank you. Mr. James, I'm hitting the timer.
Boom, fast. All right, the Greenleaf Foundation tobacco money.
Golden Leaf.
Golden Leaf, all right. They're the Golden Leaf Foundation, then. They give a tremendous amount of money to schools and so forth. How much money have they ever given to Pitt County? Do you know, have they, have they given any? In other words, this is where I'm going to, Green County's already going to the computers, you probably know that.
Right.
Edgecombe County's in the process of one-hundred percent going, and they got the money from this foundation.
Gold Leaf.
Gold Leaf. Two million dollars, free money. Most tobacco money came from Pitt County, not from Edgecombe County, not from Green County, but from Pitt County. Have we asked for money from them to take and to assist us with these textbooks, with the problems that we have, to buy, if we're gonna go to computers, get those computers and put the books on them? We won't have to do it at one time, will we? I mean, I don't know that much about it.
Well.
But am I wrong?
You'd have to replace the computers over time.
All right, well, it's, it's, in that, with Green County, that they, if they don't graduate unless they turn the computer in, they don't want to ever get a diploma, that's all I would say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But I, I, I just wanted to say that to make sure that you all know there was other ways to go about getting this money.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Emery for coming. Um, I will recognize Teresa Campbell with the ABC Board, and she'll give us the quarterly report, she'll come forward.
Good morning.
Um, I'm here today to give you a brief overview of our fiscal year 2012. Basically, I'm gonna be giving you information on our retail sales and the distributions that we made to the county. So here on our first slide, you'll see that retail sales for fiscal year 2012 were on twelve million, six-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-nine dollars, an increase of one million, one-hundred-and-twelve dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-twelve, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. And that's our increase over fiscal year 2011. Our mixed beverage sales, the total sales for fiscal year 2012 were three million, one-oh-two-nine-thirty-two, which is a hundred-and-ten-thousand, eighteen-dollar increase from fiscal year 2011. Our mixer sales, we had a little bit of a decrease, because I think the prices in our stores with the alcohol, one percent alcohol, are quite a bit more than what they can buy in the grocery store, so I think that's kind of where, so we're gonna kind of get out of doing mixer sales as much, so we won't lose that money. Next slide, let's see, we want gross sales, so we're gonna have to go back. Our gross sales for 2012, the total amount was fifteen million, seven forty-five, two forty-nine, and an overall increase from the previous year was one million, two fifteen-nine-oh-one, which was an eight-point-four percent increase. And I hope we can have an increase that, that good this year as well, 'cause that helps both us and the county. Our next slide here, I have our year-to-date distribution and retention. Our changing net assets, as you can see, was a million, three ninety-six, oh seventy-eight, eighty-three. Our actual distributions to the county at the end of the third quarter were eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Fourth quarter distribution was ninety-two thousand, five thirty-seven eighty, and we did an additional distribution, which was taken from our working capital of a hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, four sixty-two twenty, to make it a total for the year of one-point-one million dollars. And if you'll note, the figure on the bottom, the two ninety-six, oh seventy-eight, eighty-three is what we retained from our profits. So, and I'd like to make a note that seventy-nine percent of our profits went to the county, and we retained twenty-one percent. And hopefully, with the economy picking up a little bit, we'll be able to keep a little more of those profits, so that we can, we can build our business up. Next is the profit distribution comparison. I just basically took our 2011 numbers and our 2012. The statutory three-and-a-half percent profit distribution was three, for 2012, was three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, three sixty-three. Additional distribution from our working capital of seven-hundred-and-nine-thousand, six thirty-seven, which brings us to the one-point-one million that we gave to the county this year. The total distribution for fiscal year 2012, with the beverage price support, which is the nickel penny that we pay on a monthly basis to the county, was fifty-four thousand, nine twenty-seven, which is added to the, the one-point-one million, three-and-a-half percent profit distribution, and the total distribution was one-point-one-five-four-nine-two-seven. All right, I'll just go along, it's fine, it's fine. Okay, overall, I just wanted to mention that we continue to increase our sales, and as promised, we did not do any renovations to our stores this year, and we, or make a purchase of land. It's the board's plan to start on that this fiscal year. In closed session at our last meeting, the board discussed the purchase of a land building package. The plan is to close our leased location and sell the property at our Arlington, and combine the two into one location. This will help reduce our operating costs by consolidating, and of course, we'll save thirty-three thousand a year from that leased property, property that we have. It's the board's plan to grow, increase revenue, and meet the needs of the citizens of Pitt County. The board plans to build additional consumer-friendly stores, remodel existing stores, provide additional products to satisfy customer trends, and offer additional educational services to help underage drinking. The Pitt County ABC Board and its employees are dedicated to providing control, revenue, a good selection of products that are focused towards consumers, and stores located to best serve the citizens of Pitt County while generating as much revenue as possible. Thank you all for your attention, are there any questions?
Okay, now, Mr. Smith, and then Mr. James, and what, go ahead.
What do you contribute to mix sales down in 2012 compared to 2011? What do you think, why was it a drop?
It, it, it's been dropping for the past three years, and I think, like I said, since there's, the prices in the grocery store are much cheaper, I think that the consumers are buying in grocery stores instead of in our liquor stores.
Okay, Mr. James?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It looks like to me that boy's gonna spend a lot of money doing all these things that you got there.
Yes, sir.
Well, y'all remember that now. All right, the next thing is, you had, we get, you get twenty-one percent. We get seventy-nine percent.
Yes, sir.
All right, if we put twenty percent and eighty percent, twenty, we get twenty-one, yeah. Well, I'm trying to figure out, how can we entice you all to make more money, that you make it and we make it, 'cause we want more money.
Well, the way to make more money is to invest more money, and that's why we want to take this extra money to, to build a store and combine these other two locations.
That's hope, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sometimes we all spend, you know. We don't need, let me say this to you, we don't need this great, big, huge monster of, oh, my goodness, you know, tell how much money it costs out there, and we could've done the same thing with a lot less money. So, I'm gonna be looking at this building myself, but I don't want to say I told you so.
Well, let me, well, let me let you know this, we plan to do this and give what we, the one-point-one million dollars that we have, have promised to the county for this fiscal year.
Yeah.
And, and do this project as well.
We're hoping to get more.
Okay.
That's all I want to say.
Mr. McGlaughorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. James, in support of, of Ms. Campbell, I think that the board has really looked into this very thoroughly, and, and I agree, I think that we're gonna come out to be substantial and advantageous to help the board out once this new store is built. We're gonna close the one, as she indicated, on Fatale Road.
Yes.
And, so I think it's gonna be a, a great venture. One of the concerns that, you know, I have, and, and, and some people may have, that you see some commissioners now that are serving on the ABC Board, Lynn Webb and myself are serving on the board, and I, I wanna ask the, my, the attorney here, I'm hearing some concern out in the community that may be somewhat of a conflict. I don't see it as being a conflict, well, I see it as, as a service, and, and I think somewhere I did some studies, that there are many more boards of commissioners who have commissioners in this state serving on the ABC Board. And Madam Chair, Attorney, I will ask that you, could you enlighten us on that in terms of any conflict, or possible conflict, as, as you see?
Sure, generally speaking, there's no conflict of interest, we researched that issue before the first appointment, and that law hasn't changed. There are other examples within the state where commissioners or county staff members serve on the board. Off the top of my head, I can think of Proton County, that's all commissioners on their ABC Board, and I can think of Hanover County, where they have county staff serving on their ABC Board. I have also had discussion with Mike Crowell, who I consider to be one of the experts in this area with the School of Government, and there is no blanket conflict for a commissioner to serve on a board. I do know that there might be issues that arise that would cause a commissioner to abstain from voting, and those would be those decisions that would personally affect you. For example, as a county commissioner, it would not be appropriate for you or Mr. Webb to vote on, say, a salary increase to an ABC Board member, because that would benefit you personally by that, by that action. But outside something remote like that, we would look at it on a case-by-case basis, and generally speaking, there would be no conflict that would occur, and as I- And as I sit on this board with you, if an issue arises where you're asked to vote, and I believe that there is a conflict, I'll absolutely bring that to your attention in advance, and again, at the time of. So I'm not concerned that you will cross into any illegal territory.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I think this is the appropriate time for the county attorney to, once again, point out what state law says with regard to distribution of money to the county.
Sure. State law requires that all net profits of an ABC Board be distributed to the county, unless there's some other agreement. And we have worked with the ABC Board over the years, and we are currently operating under an agreement that there be $1.1 million distributed to the county, and they've honored that agreement. If such time that agreement's not honored, or we say there is an agreement, then all net profits would distribute to the county. That would be, though, net profits after their budgeted distributions, which could include a block of money that would be dedicated towards their working capital. Their working capital weak parameters within which the ABC Board operates, and so there is, absent an agreement to pass the $1.1 million, it wouldn't be that the county would automatically receive the full gross profit that was received, because they have a budgeted amount that would go into their working capital fund. If that working capital amount budgeted were at a much greater amount than it is now, their books could show little to no net profit. They haven't operated that way, and we have no reason to believe that they will. So deserving or being legally entitled to all net profits doesn't mean you get an absolute number, or you get that first number of gross profits, because there are other budgetary considerations that could impact that number. I think the county, at this point, given their gross profits with a $1.1 million agreement, has almost accomplished a win-win, so that the county can receive the money that it's expecting, but there's still some remainder that allows them to build their working capital. And the more aggressive they are, the more quickly their working capital will build. So I'm pleased that we've been able to work cooperatively to, to be a win-win for both sides.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott will need to make a comment before we move on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. I did want to report to the board that myself and Chris McDaniel did meet with Teresa and David last week to go over the final year-end numbers, and did talk about the land acquisition and new building, and obviously I don't want to go into detail at that conversation, but other than to say that this year, they did have almost $300,000 in additional net profit that went to their working capital. The new working capital maximum the ABC Board can have is 12 weeks. They've got about nine weeks right now. Their goal is still to go 12. It used to be 16, but the state has set 12 as the, as the ceiling on working capital. In terms of this, this package, this building they're trying to build will be different from the past. They're going to be financing this package over about a five-year period, and as long as the percent in sales continue to increase, they should be able to make their debt payments on that building and land package together. If, if sales were to, to decrease or to, to not be where they are, then might have an issue or problem meeting the $1.1 million in future fiscal years. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. That's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Florida Hardy and our Partners for Effective Performance Status Report. Good morning.
Good morning. In conversations with the manager a few weeks ago, we realized it had been, we've been using this tool for 10 years, and we presented it to you first back in 2001, so we just thought we'd bring it up again and mention to you that we're still using the same tool. And one of the reasons we started using what we call Partners for Effective Performance, finally known to, or maybe not so finally known to employees and supervisors as the PEP, is because we wanted to change our process. Years before, we were using a tool that allowed supervisors to evaluate employees at the end of a year. With this particular process, we start out with a planned meeting with our employees, and supervisors are required to sit down with employees and actually plan their goals for the, for the year, and it is based on the fiscal year, so it's in conjunction with the budget process and departmental goals. But we have a planning meeting with the employees, we set up their goals and objectives, we have a progress report in the middle of the year, and then at the end of the year, they get their score for this PEP. And there should be no surprises, because they were part of the planning process, and employees love that, because one of the chief complaints we had was that they were getting evaluated at the end of the process. And this tool is also used when we have performance, paid-for-performance system in place, and employees are granted raises. So it's been a successful tool, we think. It started out as a paper document that we had to key into an Excel, through Excel, and thanks to MIS, it is now an electronic tool, so we can do it on, on the computer. It's stored in the computer, and we no longer have to print out those long documents, because we had pages and pages that we were printing, so our personal files were getting bigger and bigger. But now with this particular system, we can store those securely electronically. Not everybody loves it, not everybody hates it, but it's, it's the best we can work with, and I think it has been a successful tool for employees.
One of the comments I'd like to make is that I think it was a great plan for us to do this 10 years ago, and I think it still is a great plan to be in motion, but it's a working document. I know that numerous times, you have come before us, or the manager has, and there have been things about it that have been tweaked, and added to, and changed, and that sort of thing. So I think that's very good, but you definitely need an organized, established way to evaluate your employees. So thank you for implementing that voice. Yes, Mr. Elliott?
Just want to take on to the comments that the, the PEP system, the Partners for Effective Performance, is a requirement under the, the personal ordinance that you, as a board, have adopted. The far majority of all departments do implement this. There are some departments, I guess, that have the option to opt out of certain part, so the personal ordinance, and this would be one of them. But as Florida had mentioned, the, the PEP instrument, any scores, or all the scores that were derived from last year, if we had merit money, those scores would be used to implement merit money this year. So if, Lord willing, we get to put merit money back in the budget next year, the scores from this year would drive those. So without a score, an employee would be unable to receive a merit increase, because merit increase is based upon the, the pay plan, which mirrors the state pay plan. It has to be implemented comprehensively and uniformly across all of the paid classifications. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to accept the report.
Shaka.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, we have our items for consent.
Motion to accept the items for consent.
And we have one item, I think, that we wanted to take off and put.
Yes, Madam Chairman, as a outcome of the agenda preview meeting last Thursday, some of the commissioners attending asked that number six come off, the budget amendment for the sheriff's office, to hear about excise tax funds and his, get an update, a positive report on vehicles and what we're doing with the vehicles.
Okay. And will that be good for discussion or decision?
You, however you want to do it.
Well, there's no decision, so discussion.
About number 10, where's that money coming from?
That's from the Mideast Commission. Those are federal state dollars. And actually, that's a, that's a decrease over what we had projected, is a $53,000, $53,012 decrease in dollars that we thought we were going to receive. The officials' numbers came in, they were lowering, so it's lowering the budget.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, and a second, is that correct? Okay, let's vote, with that one coming off. Okay, we'll move forward to items for discussion, and the first one, Mr. Garrus, are you going to present, or Mr. Elliott?
I can open it up and then turn to you. Commissioner Garrus asked that we put on, on the agenda, an item dealing with the inspection fee increase. As the board is aware, through the budget workshops back in May, the staff did recommend increasing the inspection fees in terms of the cost recovery model, I'm going to call it, that we would pay for all of the cost of inspections through the, the fees that are, are assessed for that. We had basically a 37% overall increase in fees. We had looked at Pitt County, benchmarked ourselves against our comparable counties, also gave you information about surrounding counties, just as a, as a point of comparison as well. We radically changed the way that we, we implement the fees to the, the new method of looking at a house, for example, instead of individual fees for different components. I think a house up to X amount of square feet would be charged one base rate, then above it, another base rate. Two things that came out of that from, as a result of it, one was dealing with the reinspection fees, and the staff had recommended changing the reinspection fee from the old fee of $50 to $150. The other fee that was, has been questioned is the single pole fee, when you put an electrical pole in for a site, went from $50 to $100. And Commissioner Garrus, I want to steal your thunder, if you want, I can stop there and let you.
Okay, I will take over. What precipitated this, and first of all, let me say I appreciate the work that our planning department and staff has did on developing this fee structure, because they were following our instructions as to recoup the cost of the planning department. And I think that they did a very good job in doing that. On an average, I think they accomplished that, but if you look at some of the individual fees, some of them went up considerably. And I have had an electrician, an electrical contractor, to discuss this with me at length on several occasions, and I have met with Scott and James on two occasions. One of those occasions, the electrical contractor was there. And what I have decided to do, he had several issues, but these were the two prevalent issues that I felt comfortable in bringing to this board. So I would like to make a motion to go on and put this on the table for discussion. Scott has already explained the differences in the fees, but the two fees that I want to propose that we change is, number one, the temporary pole fee, that was $50 last year, and went up to $100 in this year's budget. My motion is that we put that back to $50. The second part of my motion is, and the reinspection fee, which was $50 last year, it went up to $150 in this year's budget. My motion is that we make that $75. And the third part of my motion is that we make both of these fees retroactive back to the beginning of our budget, which was July the 1st. That is my motion, and we can.
Second?
I've got a second, so now we can have whatever discussion you would like to have.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. James and Mr. Owens?
We instructed the planning department to recoup what money they would spend, what it cost the taxpayers of Pitt County to take and to do this inspection job. I went to the manager, to James, and because I was very much, primarily to James, I was very much concerned with how much it went up. And they assured me, Mr. James, we even at this figure are not going to make any money. And what we're going to do here is come back now and tell them, and I'm a firm believer, and I've just paid it too, but, that if this comes down to what it costs, we'll be willing to pay it. He's not going to pay it, he's going to get it from the other people. You know it, and I know it. It's a pass-on effect, but somebody has got to pay it, and I don't think the taxpayers ought to be the one, because if we take this off, we're going to have to add somewhere else to it. That's all I got to say.
Okay, Mr. Owens?
I'm glad it came back up before. I've raised some questions at our budget discussions about this. Anytime you've got a 100 or 150% increase in the cost of operation of something from the prior year, I have a big question. I had one then, I think there's some calculations that were overreviewed, I think so now, and I'm in favor of this. As a second amendment to that, I think Scott, you and your staff needs to look at the others that increased to that considerable amount. You, you look at the, the economy as it's down, you, you've got for building a house, Jimmy Garrus, you've got to have an engineer, you've got to have an architect, you've got to have this. The inspections are already there. We have not hired more inspectors, I don't think, with, with, with the buildings now. And I just did not see then, and do not see now, no need arguing over it now, I lost that argument then, but I'm, I'm in favor of this vote.
Okay, Mr. Garrus?
Madam Chairman, let me respond to Commissioner James. I understand your point, I really do. And I do have some reservations, and I explained this to the contractor about changing our budget two months into the year.
That's right.
However, when I looked at these two issues, the temp pole fee and the reinspection fee, I felt like that they were of a valid concern. Again, if you look at page 82 in our agenda package, and James did, did this for us, if you look at the reinspection fee in that first column, from our comparative counties and surrounding counties, the average for that fee is $55.79, and ours currently is $150 in this year's budget. Again, my motion says that we need to take that to 75, which is still a $25 increase over the $50 from last year. If you look at the temp pole fee from our surrounding counties and comparative counties, that average is $45.75. So if you look at those, that comparison, we are significantly higher than our surrounding counties and comparable counties. So on the, on the temp pole fee, my, our recommendation there is that we take that back to 50, which is still $5 higher than the average. Again, I understand the point, that they were developing these fees to recoup the cost, and I understand that and support that. But on these two fees, I think they are pretty excessive, and I stand by my motion.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I have an amendment. I would, I would propose, as an amendment, that, that none of these changes be retroactive.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. McGlone?
Yeah, well, I think Jimmy has a valid recommendation. I, I do think that we had set our budget reflecting the amount of monies that was, was mentioned to the public, and we voted on that budget. However, after looking at the comparison, the reduction of monies that the comparative counties is charging, and it's compared to what we're charging, I could see that, that is being relatively high. And I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting that, but as Commissioner Johnson just pointed out, not to make it retroactive.
Okay. We vote, excuse me?
I want to talk to James. Come up here, James. I did this, I'm not buying this. All right, James, overhaul, they're taking these two, just two things, aren't they?
Just two things.
That's right. Out of the budget, that. How about overhaul for our inspection? How do we stand for those?
We're only two months into the budget, and we're tracking right on schedule to recoup the cost. Scott and I have talked about this. We're at the summertime, we're going to get a lot more permitting activity than we will in December and January. So right now, we're up just a tad. If we go through our regular cycle, we'll be right at the amount, based on the first two months for the, to cover our expenses in inspections and permitting.
What I'm saying, are we going to make money or lose money? You're saying we're going to break, it's just.
I say we break even.
We break even.
As a fee schedule is established without these amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently tracking.
Like we're doing now?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner James?
If I don't want, then I'll do it.
In the agenda package, I had made a counter-recommendation to what Vice Chairman Garrus is suggesting. On the reinspection, I said, yes, go down to $75 for the first reinspection, but every reinspection thereafter, $100.
Because they're going to have more.
That's the only difference, I think, between what's on the table.
Okay. Any other comments?
I want to respond to James for Mr. James.
Okay.
Yeah.
The fallacy of this is the cost that James is talking about. He's tracking the cost of this. That's where I have a problem with you, James. Thank you.
Okay. We vote on the.
Substitute motion first.
Substitute motion first, which is to.
Amend the fees, as Mr. Garrus stated, but to make those not retroactive, so effective.
October 1st.
October 1st.
Starting October 1st with the new fee changes, if it passes. Okay, so we're ready to vote on the substitute motion, everyone understand? Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, thank you. So we don't need to go to the other motion. All right, thank you very much. And our next item for discussion is the sheriff, Sheriff Els, if you'll come up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
You want to direct me exactly what you'd like me to report on, because the agenda item says we request and receive the excise tax of six thousand three.
Okay, I'll get Mr. Elliott to restate what he stated before.
Sure.
For all of us to hear better. Thank you.
Sheriff Elks, the discussion in the agenda preview last Thursday, that goes around the state excise tax or other type of taxes you receive that are specifically designated for law enforcement purposes. I think the board members who attended wanted to hear a report on maybe what vehicles you have bought in addition to the vehicles that were in the budget for July 1. So they have an idea of, I think we bought about a dozen new vehicles out of the general fund, and then you've purchased maybe a like amount out of these designated funds.
Okay. Let me just give us an overall sight of what we did. We've purchased thirteen cars with the amount of money that y'all gave us during the budget. And that total package of equipping the cars, marketing the cars, worked out to be about three hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Of that, twenty thousand dollars come from our budget. That would be the asset forfeiture money.
The forfeiture money?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We purchased a hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in cars outside of that budget item. That was purchased with asset forfeiture money as well. Presently have a balance of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in the state excise tax forfeiture money, and in the federal, we have fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And also, since the last budget, you know, there's a lot of talking in the last budget hearing about guns, we also spent five thousand dollars of that money as well to buy guns with.
Okay.
So of the hundred and sixty-four, how many cars did you buy with that?
Six.
Six. So you have added nineteen cars.
Correct.
Okay, good. I think that it's important for us to inform the public about that because there was so much discussion about cars during the budget time, and I think this is very good. I commend you and your organization for taking some of this forfeiture money and buying six additional cars. And hopefully, as you get more of that money, we can buy more cars.
Well, we've been very aggressive in trying to make sure we take advantage of the opportunities that's there for us to seize and the state reward us with the forfeiture money. But just to give you an overall, where we at on cars, we have a total of one hundred and eighty-five cars in our fleet, and we're going to turn in sixteen vehicles to be turned in for sale back to the county. This morning alone, I received two phone calls of additional vehicles down, one was transmission out with a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. We will probably shift that around and see if we can find a car maybe in a little bit better shape than that. And also, another car is down this morning. We don't know what's wrong with that one yet. But we still have approximately thirty cars that are in desperate need right now. So if any time you guys will come up with some extra money, two hundred thousand dollars will carry us a long way. We've got a couple ID vehicles that are out, they're next on the radar to replace, whether we come up with the money or you can come up with some money for us.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Owens?
How about your federal prisons?
Mr. Owens, and then Mr. James.
I think Sheriff and whoever's in this staff doing this is doing exactly what they ought to do. They're using this restricted money to buy cars to try to help the taxpayers, and I commend you for that, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. James.
How many federal prisons are you, on average, you're keeping now?
Well, the average federal count's down right now. We're averaging about somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-five.
It is down there.
But I'm very concerned about our jail population. Jail population is close to five fifty. We're probably sixty over capacity. So that's something we need to be keeping on our radar screen. Do we need to look at opening up the new additions? We know that's about eight hundred thousand dollar cost. It's hard to push to get our federal count up right now with so over capacity, so we have to look at that. But the federal prisons are down cost to state right now, the population of them are down.
Do we need to talk to some judges or anything, deal that?
Well, the biggest thing is I couldn't house them if I had them. If I had thirty extra right now, I'd be busting at seams, and we're busting at seams right now. So our overage right now is kind of working out to balance the thing because we're over, but we're also down on jail population. If we had thirty extra inmates right now, we'd be looking at, you know, close to six hundred prisoners, we'd be way over capacity. You know, we do have the additional wing we can open, but like I said, that's eight hundred thousand dollars just for to open that up. So I and the manager are aware of the numbers. We need to be conscious of what the future holds in the next couple of months. If that population number continues, we need to sound and talk about it and see what we can do. Right now, the jail tells me they're comfortable and they can operate. They generally predict the population will go down in the next couple of months, on the average it has.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes, Sheriff, as you transitioned from Crown Vic, what are you going to?
We've got some, well, we're going to Chargers is what we purchased for the patrol.
Oh, Chargers.
Yeah, and we bought some undercover vehicles as well.
Madam Chair, you want a motion on six, or you already have it?
I don't think we need to, well, we probably have to accept it, yes. Because we took it off the consent.
I'll move.
Second. Okay, let's vote. Okay. I put down the resolution for approving the financing terms for items for decision, our first one. Do you hear a motion? Shall we accept this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I can just make a note, the North Carolina Local Government Commission will be hearing this matter tomorrow. It's been scheduled on their agenda. That's why it is needed for part of their approval process.
Okay, thank you.
One question.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference in this and what we passed last time, Scott?
No difference at all. All the terms and conditions are the same. The only thing the resolution does is authorizes myself and the staff to execute the documents to go to closing.
We didn't do that last time?
No, no, and if I can clarify, the last resolution was with Bank of America. Then your last meeting, the board approved the change to Siemens, but we did not have the accompanying resolution with it. So this is the resolution.
Did you have to pay Bank of America any money to get them out?
No, sir. They actually pulled out.
The cause of that, sorry. All right, okay.
Okay, Mr. Owens, if you'll finish voting?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, our next item, Dr. Morrow, the budget amendment for the Health Department.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. I've come this morning to ask for debt write-off of our bad debt for the last three and a half years. It was February of two thousand and nine, the last time that the Health Department wrote off the bad debt. So it's been quite a while, but we took this to your Board of Health last month and approved a write-off of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents, going back to February of oh nine. That's about a little less than sixty thousand dollars per year on average and represents eighteen hundred, over eighteen hundred accounts. These accounts have cycled twice through the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, so anyone who comes in for service, who pays taxes, or, you know, wins in the North Carolina lottery, anything like that would get collected on. So they've been through two cycles of that without collections. We've been mailing all this time bills and not getting any response, so.
And this is something we've done in the past.
We do it.
We've had to do, yes.
Yes, ma'am. We do it every few years.
Thank you. Any comments? Dr. Johnson?
I would move that we write off this bad debt.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made, seconding. Comments?
One comment for the public. We have done everything we can do to collect this money, and we cannot collect it.
That's correct.
That is correct.
And I would just clarify, too, that we work very well with our clients, and if there's any way that we can work out a payment plan, we're always willing to do that before we get to this phase.
Okay, we've set this file against the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, where we get income tax return, so we've gone to every extreme that we can.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Owens first, and then you, Mr. McGowan.
Other than the write-off, we all know what that understands, what that means, Doc. But this just clears your records, is that correct?
That's correct. So at any time, I would just clarify, at any time should these patients come back to the Health Department for services, then these accounts will come back alive, too. So we'll try to collect that money as soon as we see them.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes, sir.
Most of these patients, well, you probably don't know, but are they indigent? Are they, can they be located? There's some that just can't be located because they maybe moved out of town or fictitious name, or all of the above?
All of the above.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's vote, please, on the motion. Mr. Hammond? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have from the Department of Social Services. I didn't see seating. Okay, thank you.
We're here today to ask permission to upgrade our staff returner from eighty percent to one hundred percent in our Child Support Enforcement Unit. The workload has increased, and she is required to work overtime as well as be on call when our Child Protective Service workers work. So we need her to be available to do the work that needed. And she's currently working thirty-two hours per week, but we need that to go to forty hours per week.
Things important, that funds are available within the revenue stream.
I so believe, Madam Chairman. Second.
Okay, Mr. Garris?
My comment was going to be that the funds are included in the budget. Therefore, I was going to make a motion, but the motion has already been made. If it hasn't been seconded, I'll second it.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, and our next item is the Manning Family Cemetery relocation. Ms. Gallagher?
Yes, and I'll turn this over to Justin Smith, if he is in the back of the room with the family members. This is a cemetery that's located in the unincorporated part of Pitt County. The family members have all gotten together. They've retained Mr. Smith from Smith Funeral Services to move it. He has worked with me from the beginning of this project. He has complied with all of the procedural requirements in terms of genealogy research, public notice, and has received written consents from all of the family members, and they have documented everything very well. So he is here if you have questions for him. I don't know if he intended a presentation, but this board would require your permission for him to move this at no cost to the county at all, and you've done these before.
Yes, we've done these before, Mr. Smith, so.
I would make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Okay, all right, any discussion? Nice seeing you, nice having you with us, and thank you for doing a good job.
Appreciate it. Mrs. Gallagher, she was very helpful in the process.
Thank you, appreciate that.
And if I may, too, just so that you know, the family members and heirs of those in that cemetery have all been present this morning.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, next, our appointments. Mr. Elliott?
Yes, on item number four, appointment to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Community Advisor Committee, their Recommendation Committees Commission for appointment of Renetta Williams to initial one-year term on that board.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. And then we have a reappointment to the Simpson Planning Board.
Yes, that's Robert D. Enderez for a two-year appointment that would expire August 2nd, two thousand and fourteen, again, reappointment. Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, that passes. Next, we have our Commissioners' comments. Let's start with you, Mr. Jack.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just one quick one, to make the board aware that the town of Aiden is being nationally recognized as one of the best places in the U.S. to raise a family, and they'll be featured in a thirty-minute documentary that'll air on Discovery Channel, I believe, the early part of next year. It's called Viewpoints, with Terry Bradshaw, the former NFL quarterback. So we're very proud of that in Pitt County. It's all.
And they also were in the State Magazine.
Yes, for the College Festival, and that went off, that went very well.
Yes.
And some of us attended that over the weekend.
Okay, Mr. McGowan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My colleague, Commissioner Hammond, brought up a very valid point in terms of what the benevolent corporation is doing on black-on-black crime. We have in the audience, Mr. Keith Cooper, who is the chairman of that benevolence corporation. Madam Chair, if it would be the permission of the Commissioner to allow him to come just for a minute to elaborate as to what's going on on this black-on-black crime workshop, if it's okay with you, for a minute.
Okay, one minute.
Mr. Cooper.
Where are you, Keith? Because we don't usually do that at Commissioners' comments, because we're right out of journey.
Very quickly, thank you, Commissioner McGowan. Right now, basically what we're doing is we focusing on a door-to-door campaign, where we're going around to the various neighborhoods, and we're reaching out to people. We're taking resources. We're working with various organizations like the Real Crisis Center, Building Hope, various other local organizations, and we're trying to reach these troubled families so we can get the assistance that they need to help break the cycle of violence, or where this may be an issue. As was stated earlier, on October 6th, at the West Greenville Gym, twelve noon, Saturday, October 6th, we're going to have a Stop the Violence Unity March. We appreciate the support. I gave Commissioner Hammond, I'm not sure if you mentioned, I was a little late.
I'm wasting now.
No, I'm talking about the resolution.
Yes, sir.
But we'll get into that some other time.
Thank you very much. We'll deal with the resolution at a later time, because we're into Commissioners' comments, and it's not been put on the agenda. Commissioner Johnson?
Just quickly, I'd like to express appreciation to all the county employees. Most county employees are doing more with less money, and this board appreciates it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garris? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner James? Commissioner Hammond?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I have been asked to ask this board to support a resolution relative to awareness on black-on-black violence and homicides. And I'm glad now that my district has been expanded whereby it is reflective of the fact that not all of the crime is being committed in West Greenville. I represent West Greenville since nineteen ninety-eight, and there was a time that ninety-plus percent of all of the in-city crime was committed, was being, was happening in my district. But now, since our city has grown, and it's all over the city, and I'm glad that it's reflective of that, and I want to thank Mr. Cooper and the Benevolent Corp for joining in with the Neighbors Against Violence to bring the awareness out that black violence is in the hood and also all over the city, murders and all. When former Commissioner Royall and I was here, seemed like every other week during the summer months, he was contacting me relative to a family that had approached this church family about assistance with finances to help bury somebody who had been killed or had lost their life relative to this issue. And this march that's going to be held first Saturday in October at twelve noon is to bring more awareness to this issue. Our sheriffs and many civil rights organizations and ministers are in support of making this more aware to the community and to ask them to join in with their assistance to help prevent or eradicate, as much as we can, this violence and these murders that are being committed in our neighborhoods by our children and by our families and what have you. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate you taking the time to come by. And I appreciate you taking the time to come by the center to sit down to share this with me. And I hope and pray that when the resolution come, we only have, we only had one meeting in this, in this September.
We'll meet October 1st and 15th, so we can bring it back the first.
But we'll be meeting October 1st and October 15th, and maybe we can get that calmerized and on the agenda to talk about it more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Owens?
Hold on, I commend anyone and everyone that wants to fight crime. I think it's a common thing to do for all society, and I moved it with a jury.
Okay, all right, let's vote to adjourn. Mr. James, you need to hit your button again.
Didn't I hit?
Mr. Abrams?